About seven o'clock, so we'll start the meeting. I could have our roll call and I'm happy Tim volunteered to be our secretary for tonight.
Yep, absolutely. Thank you. Tom Kaiser.
Yes.
Paul Bertrand.
I'm here.
Jim Barnwell.
Here.
Brian Cook.
Here.
Very tired people. I've been up since four this morning. Phil Check.
Here.
Timothy Monae. Here.
Okay, we can all join us in the Pledge of Allegiance. We appreciate it.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, in a true republic which stands one condition under God, the invisible with liberty and justice for all.
Oh, no. No, no. At a second time.
I'd like to have a approval of the meeting agenda. Should have it before you.
Motion to approve.
A second. We have a motion and a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none. Can we have a vote? All those in favor seeing this five by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Motion is passed to approve the agenda as noted. First thing is, we wanted to welcome our new member. He's a representative in Garrish Township, or is appointed by Garrish Township. He represents, you know, all of us in the community. As I said when I joined, we're not here representing one township or the other. We're here to represent the, you know, the purpose that we are committed to, and that's the, uh, the lake. So we represent everybody. And so, well, further ado, I'd like to introduce Tom and if you'd like to just.
I don't really have much to say except I love this lake and I love this community. I'm honored to have an opportunity to fill in for Bill Lam's position before. Apparently because of the conflict, I chose it'd be more appropriate to resign and I'm not sure I want to applaud the board for appointing me, but they did ask me and I'm happy to serve.
Do you have a question of Tom? Have you taken the oath of office?
I have administered and I, as long as she didn't go too long with the phrases, I was able to remember them.
Sure.
To get it down, okay? Clark did a good job. She made me raise my right hand. I told you, you can't necessarily believe a lawyer, but I'm hoping that in this case she could.
Okay. Next on is we, um, since Bill was our secretary, we need to elect a new secretary. I asked him to do at least for tonight and hopefully he'll continue that position.
Hopefully he won't.
For not too long, but anyway. I, you know, I'd like to have any nominations or any volunteers to step forward at this time.
Are you willing to do it for the rest of the couple meetings, Tim?
Yeah, it's fine, of course. Yeah.
I'll make, I've made motion to elect Timothy Monae as the secretary.
Okay. Do we have a second?
Certainly second, buddy. You're a great guy.
Hey, we have a.
I'm long-winded, Tom.
And a second. Is there any further discussion or any discussion? Hearing none. All those in favor of, uh, Tim being the new secretary, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed. Hearing none. Congratulations.
Thank you.
Next order of business is approval of the June 10th, 2025 meeting.
Motion to approve the minutes.
Okay. We have a motion.
A second.
And a second, but all. Is there any further discussion or any discussion?
Yes. I have no corrections to make, but I wanted to make something crystal clear to everybody. In, uh, item. It's probably on the second page. Item capital B, little F. Uh, I'm sorry, little E, F, and G. I wanted to make a comment about those. So in item E, little E, uh, there was, it discusses, uh, getting an opinion from an attorney. And, uh, it talks about Barnwell and Cook being the two representatives from Glua, two representatives. That motion failed. In item F, little F, it authorized Cook to be the lead with one other board member, two members. In item, that failed too. In item G, which passed, Chairman Barnwell was to be the lead contact and I expressed my desire to be a joint participant. I had absolutely no contact, no input with the attorney. I just want to make that clear to everybody.
Okay, we have a, do we have a motion to approve? Yes, we did. All those in favor of approving the June 10th minutes, signified by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed.
Just show me abstaining on that because.
Oh, yeah. And we have one abstention. Therefore, the motion passes. Okay, we now.
If I may, can I ask a question?
Yeah.
Was there a reason that you didn't, um, have contact with the attorney?
I wanted to, but I wasn't invited. Okay. I didn't know anything about it.
All right, thanks. So everything's clear. My involvement was, I sent the original email to the attorney introducing, um,
Jim.
Jim, sorry. To, to them. Um, and then that was it. It was just because we already used them. It was just an email saying, hey, and then he took it from there.
Let him know we were going to get ahold of him.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay. Next item is treasurer's report.
Okay, if I could. Um, so I think everybody has a copy I passed out of the treasurer's report. Normally I do this at month end. But, uh, I did it as of today. This is our balances that we have and I checked it according to our account at Huntington Bank today. Uh, this is the same balance that it was, uh, July 31st too. So nothing's changed and nothing's changed for a couple of months, except for one thing. On the first item, we added a thousand dollars to our checking account. That was the money we got from the state of Michigan as a reimbursement. And that thousand dollars also shows up um, in the number under liabilities in that position in the 195,739. So both were increased by a thousand dollars. That's the only change since the statement from the last meeting. And the reason I did this, um, as of today's date is we're probably going to be talking about this dispersing funds. So this is the balance we have. Um, so in addition to this cash on hand, uh, at the last meeting, the board approved, um, uh, expenses for an attorney to look at how funds could be dispersed up to a thousand dollars. I, I don't know what happened in the meetings with the attorney, but one of the things I would have hoped happened was some sort of letter of understanding as to what the proposal was and what it was going to cost us. So I don't know how much the cost is. The board approved up to a thousand dollars at the last meeting. But I don't know what it's going to be. So the disbursement as of today would be this $5,470 minus some amount for attorney fees.
Is there any other outstanding, anything else outstanding that you can think of besides the attorney bill?
So, so, um, the last meeting was the last one since our budget. Uh, in last meeting, we approved a thousand dollars. In our budget, the only thing, I have the minutes from the budget, the only thing that was approved as an expenditure, uh, uh, let me find it, uh, was $2,000 for audit, it says. Motion passed.
Do we have any outstanding invoices from the auditor?
We are done with the auditor. I think it's 1,200 or 1,500.
Yes.
And also during the, all the discussion, I do remember we talked about there might be some other miscellaneous things. And under the budget, it's for funding legal and community outreach. We stuck.
And so I've got to disagree with you, Jim. Here's the minutes of our meeting.
Don't.
No others. It was, it was $2,000 for an audit period. No other slop in that stuff. So if, if, if you want me to pay something, we need a motion on the floor.
Make a motion to amend the budget to allow for the continuation of the website for short time. And we may have some other miscellaneous costs involved in the, um, the, um, dissolution process, um, such as if we do a mailing or if we do anything else. And so in that, um, budget, I would like to have included, um, the website, maintain that because there may be some correspondence and I think it's important that we continue that because we're, it's, it becomes due in the next few days. And so I'd like to amend our budget, have their budget amended to allow say five or $600 and.
I'll, I'd, I would like to second it and I feel strongly, we have to do that as part of our due diligence. So I'm all for it.
A little confused. Um, all the information I was getting was from the Garrish website. And that's where all the Glua stuff was. That no longer exists on there. So what website are we actually talking about?
Glua.org. It's been in operation for probably a year and a half, two years. When it was taken off the Garrish site, they've been putting on the minutes, the, um, you know, the, uh, agendas.
Okay.
You know, and we put in there like the preliminary engineering reports there and some other things that come up. And I know people have, you know, do go to it.
I assume we pay an annual.
Yeah, and it's like a hundred and $35 or a hundred fifty dollars.
Well, that's really cheap.
We went inexpensive.
Um.
So since I kicked this off, I'm all for paying it, but, but we need a board motion to do it. That's what I'm, I'm, that's all I want to say about it.
What, when is the annual renewal?
Pardon?
When's the annual renewal?
It's coming up to this month. I feel it's important to have because we will be able to post minutes at this meeting and also, you know, people have been going to it and at some point, if and when we do dissolve, it'd be nice to be able to, oh, I'm sorry, it'd be nice to put on there just that, hey, you know, we've been dissolved and, uh, you know, please refer to your township, you know, website or any additional information.
And I understand. So how long do we plan on keeping the website operational? Um, how long, you know, cause the plan is to dissolve this as quickly as possible.
I want to give it a, you know, open, you know, it's a yearly thing. It's a minor expense. And then we put that notice on there for people so that they come up. Cause I even in the last few weeks, I have asked people, asked me what's going on with the sewers. As if they haven't even heard that we're being dissolved. And that way if people get online, they heard about Glua a long time ago, they can go on it and I just leave it on it. And then once it expires in a year, that'd be the end of it.
Now somebody's going to maintain it for the next year?
Yeah. I mean, it doesn't take anybody. That's why you put that last blurb on it.
Right. No, I'm.
Yeah.
My, my main career was in IT. So.
You know more about it than I do.
So when you say what you're saying, I got a thousand questions in my mind because it's like, wait, if we're no longer in existence and the utility, and, and the website's going to end in a year. Okay. Well, I mean, what's the point of even keeping it around that long? What's, where's that information you get transferred to for future people that want to look at the stuff or, you know, need to go back to the stuff? I mean, we can't have the website out there forever.
No, it'll last.
So I think.
Expires. It'll expire.
Right. So I mean.
Right now, we don't know when we will expire.
Well, we know it's going to be soon, right?
Hmm. I'd have to defer to the townships because we can't, uh, we cannot dissolve Glua.
No, but we can do what we need to do so that they can, because they can't do anything until we're done.
Until co, in concert. You're correct.
Yes.
Um, I have a quick question if I may. If you set the website aside, because I've never been one to approve any monies, um, without a definitive amount of where is it going to. So if we set the website aside and amending the budget for a miscellaneous cost, is this board comfortable with just opening it up? Um, I, without something on the table of like, how much can we open it up? How much, you know, the treasurer, I mean, I'm.
I think we're going to have some miscellaneous cost if we elect to make some mailing at the end of our.
Sure.
Thing.
Your motion stated a amount.
No, it did not.
No, I was going to ask. I was asking, I'd like to make a motion. I'd like to make a motion to amend the budget to include $500.
Okay.
For the website, a public awareness and community outreach as needed to facilitate the dissolution of.
And that would be, that obviously would include the miscellaneous costs.
Miscellaneous. We may have some mailing costs. We may have some.
All right.
I thought I heard this, but just in case, I'll second that amendment to that.
So at some point, we have to say, we ain't spending no more money. We've got all the invoices paid.
Right.
So here's the dollar amount. So we can actually approve the distribution of that.
Correct. And we've approved one other payment that I know of. And that is the, um,
Legal fees.
The legal fees.
Yep.
For this.
I'm not.
Up to a thousand dollars. And that's what he agreed to do it.
Yep. And I don't know if you've heard where that's at or how much.
I, after he sent this letter the other day and I said, I sent back and I just said, please order your bill as soon as possible because we've got to get this done.
Yep. And we should have that soon then.
I suspect.
Is that opposed to the website? I'm trying to understand what other, what we would need to mail out.
Could I?
Yeah.
So the advice we got from the attorney, whether we want to follow it or not, is that we send a letter to all the donors. So that could be one.
Nope. You're right. Nope, nope, nope. And that's why I'm asking. I'm, I'm, you know, I, for me, I'm going, I don't see anything we need to do.
Yeah.
But, you know, I can miss stuff.
I don't want to have a meeting if we have to pay, you know, postage. Postage and mailing and things like that for any of these things.
Well, that's what I'm trying to understand because.
Yeah. There may be some miscellaneous small, that's why I said $500 in aggregate of expenses. Who knows? There may be a filing fee with the state of Michigan or or dissolution. I don't know.
That would be on the township, right?
Well.
Isn't the township, are, are most of the townships going to take care of the?
Yeah, they hopefully will, but we, I don't know.
If we, if, yeah, I mean, I'm, I've tried to gather as much information. They'll forgive me for my stupidity, but it seems if our purpose tonight is to try to decide what we're going to do, we have basically one purpose to decide what we're going to do with that.
That's the main thing.
Okay. And if that's yet, if, and if the, the purpose of the board is no longer that our, our issue, the GLA is no longer kind of function, then we need to dissolve because there have been decisions made and within the townships that we're not going ahead with the, the sewer project. And if that was our function, um, we have no other purpose. So we're going to dissolve and we just have to conclude, make a final disposition of the money. So if we said, if we said, we're going to have the money go here and we're going to, um, reduce by up to $500 for any mailings that, uh, um, that need to be done. And, but we, we get that meeting done or whatever fee we're going to pay to the website. Why we're going to keep the website, I happen to agree with you. I don't see a reason to keep a website that we're not going to have any function for. And who's going to put anything in or respond to it? I don't think we want, some people have one view of.
Well, we have a motion here and others not doing.
And that shouldn't, uh, happen. So it seems to me we ought to get on with the dissolution and we ought to get on with distributing the money minus any necessary, uh, um, fees up to $500 for mailings that if, if there's a choice to do that, we can make that decision tonight, I suppose. So I don't know.
I'd like to do it for community outreach and then we'll leave it at $500. And that limits what we're doing.
Community outreach. We're going to do community outreach for something that no longer exists.
If we do mailings or something or, or something, just as we said to the donors, we may want to send a letter to the donors and say, this is what happened. We dissolved, you know, the townships elected us to dissolve and we appreciate all your support.
Well, I've been through this type of stuff before. So you're saying, okay, well, we're going to set this money aside that we might use, we might not use.
Right.
And then we're going to disperse this other money. So then we still have to disperse this at the end because it's still sitting there and hasn't been used. We're way ahead of ourselves.
Okay.
I mean, we've got to figure out what we're going to do and do it.
Yeah.
I mean.
I'm not disagreeing. I'm just saying.
I mean, the only way to figure out what you're going to do with the money is to be at the point where you're done. This is the balance.
Then we can't even talk about disbursement tonight because we won't know until we have everything paid for.
I think we can discuss it.
Discuss it. And I think we can make a decision myself.
And how.
And just say that this is what we're going to do with any unspent monies.
I just.
Okay. Well, we have a motion.
And what's the dollar amount on their motion?
$500 to increase the budget.
And maybe you want to consider decreasing them $500 to $300.
We just, we have a motion.
Yes.
Please. So let's vote on that. We're going to have a roll call vote. I'd appreciate that.
Oh, excuse me.
Yes, you're on, Tim.
Chairman Barnwell.
Yes.
Um, Phil Check.
Yes.
Brian Cook.
No.
Paul Bertrand.
Yes.
Tom Kaiser. Timothy Monae. No.
Motion fails. Okay.
So can I make a motion to the same motion with a $300 limit?
I don't think it's going to pass. We need to figure out where we're at.
Make it.
I made the motion, $300.
Just similar.
Pay for miscellaneous things that might occur.
And so we have a motion. I don't think any further discussion.
My discussion would be, I'm still going to vote no because I don't see any reason to do it. I think we're going to, the purpose here tonight is to find out what to do with this money. And, you know, everybody's going to have, what, going to do that, meet again to decide whether somebody likes it better.
The problem I'm going to have if we say we're going to disperse all this money and we have a bill that comes in, how are we going to pay it?
We voted out at that time.
Well, we have, we have 1,000.
Can I try and answer your question?
Yeah.
So if, if we continue this meeting and we vote to disperse the money and we follow the attorney's advice about writing a letter, which.
We're, yeah, we're holding money out. I, I understood you're holding money out anyway for attorney fees, right? We have to do that.
And that's covered. We already approved that.
Okay.
Yeah.
That's $1,000. But if we, if we, uh, in the next few minutes or so, approve a motion to disperse the funds and follow the attorney's advice about writing the letter to the donors, that's going to take postage and whatever.
We can come back to this. Let's put this aside and let's move on.
Well, you got a motion.
So we have a motion.
Yeah.
Okay. Roll call again, please.
Um, Tom Kaiser.
I'll support it for the reasons, I'll support it.
Yes. Okay. Paul Bertrand.
Yes.
Yes.
Jim Barnwell. Brian Cook.
No.
Uh, Phil Check.
Yes.
Timothy Monae. No.
So three.
Motion passes for $300. But we added to that and.
As treasurer, I needed that motion in order to prove, to approve the disbursement.
Oh, I, I understand. I just believe if it comes up, you just pay for it when it comes up. It would have been a very easy thing that we could have voted on it then instead of just leaving the money out there. But that's me.
Okay.
So one other financial thing.
Okay.
So we have for the board to consider. We have a, a legal bill that's going to come due and we have one open grant. We may be able to draw a pond for reimbursement. We want to do that. It's going to, it's, we have, I think we have to wait till the third quarter to apply even. So it's going to.
Grant.
It's the 40,000 Eagle.
Eagle. Yeah.
And, uh, it was mainly for a lot of administrative stuff to receive a reimbursement. We have to pay it first.
Yes.
Do, have we gotten anything back from that grant?
Yeah, we got.
They covered our audit fee.
Okay.
And, and some other fees.
Some other fees earlier about a year ago.
But it's going to cause a delay in knowing what the total dollars to be dispersed are.
I think we're going to just.
I think a grant just needs to be canceled and we just need to pay the attorney fees and any other minor things to get on with it.
That works for me.
Yeah. Um, I thought we had already did that Eagle one, but apparently not.
We, we did. The other two are canceled. That one we kept open because we just got back, uh, probably June, the, uh, county fee.
Yep.
So, okay. So now we're going to go to dissolution and that I just want to preface that, you know, that sewers have been talked about for a long time, starting in the seventies. And in 2017, you know, Garrish and Lyon, the townships had a feasibility report done. They filed it with a preliminary engineering report. And then I think it was in 2021, uh, based on their feeling that sewers was a feasible and, and the best alternative for solving any lake-wide problems and whatever, uh, they created us. And our goal and our charge was to do, you know, work on, working on the coordination and construction and operation maintenance of municipal sanitation. We did not, um, you know, determine that that was our purpose. It was determined for us by the two townships. And during the ensuing years, uh, based on a lot of public input, the two townships, Garrish and Lyons have this year decided to dissolve Glua. However, in order to do that, uh, Glua has to take certain steps to accommodate township one of being is, you know, getting rid of all our debts, paying all our bills. Um, so we're working on doing that. We've done most of it. Probably the biggest hurdle other than maybe a few bills, minor bills to the attorney and if we get anything else, up to $300. We, I have no other real obligations to anybody. Um, but tonight I'm hoping that we can determine how we're going to disperse the unspent funds. Be it this number up here minus a thousand, this number minus a thousand and plus a little bit more. So I don't know if we're going to exactly, uh, specify an exact amount, but I think we're going to hopefully come up and say, okay, the, any remaining funds after these few minor bills will be dealt with in this manner. So that's what I'd like to have our objective tonight to be. So I guess, um, you know, as we, we all know what we're talking about, but before any motions are made, I'd just like to have each member kind of give a brief, you know, they've been thinking about this for two months now, really three months. You know, we've all been throwing ideas around and thoughts. We've got kind of a report from the attorney as to some of the things we can do.
Tell us something from me.
No.
Um, so let me ask something before you do that. I'm kind of the new, new kid on the block here. And I've read everything. I've read everything I was given, an opportunity to read and attorney's information. Wouldn't we be further ahead? I mean, I have a definite idea what we think you should do and maybe none of the board thinks it's appropriate, but I would be, I would like to just put in the form of a motion and I'll, I'll give my two cents worth and then we can hash it around and, uh, see everybody is, because I, I don't know what anybody's views are.
I think we should really discuss this before even thinking of any motions. Cause there's a lot of things we need to talk about here. It's not just one thing. I mean, we gotta talk about getting rid of the grant. What are we going to do? Are we going to send letters? What are we going to do? I mean, throwing a motion out is going to do nobody any good. I think we as a board need to have a serious discussion right now about how we're going to move forward, what we're going to do. Based on that discussion, then we'll make some motions to approve what we come to. Based on that discussion, then we'll make some motions to approve what we come to.
Buying what you're saying. That's, you know, that's why I wanted to see it come first.
And I think, you know, you're talking about the grants and a little bit of money. I don't, the grant we have to. You know, get out unless we want to try to keep it open a little longer.
No, I mean, to me, I mean.
But okay, we've already decided that, you know, but.
No, we haven't. Well, then let's do a motion. Let's do it. Let's get it done with and out of the way. If we're going to get rid of the grant, let's do it.
So I have a question. Does it, normally the procedure is you make a motion, you second, and you have a discussion. But if we do that, we're going to maybe have more than one motion like we did last time.
Too many emotions.
Yeah, so.
We always.
They have a problem.
We always discuss.
Okay, I want to do it. I've said it. Procedure. We're going to have each one just give a little brief, you know, of where we are and what they want, you know, what they envision. Let's do that.
Okay.
And we can entertain a motion. And as far as the grant, that's, we can take care of, let's not muddy this water. Let's deal with it and logical. We'll just start. You know, I know, Bill, if you want to, oh, yeah. Start with. No, we usually have public comments, but we'll, we'll maybe entertain that when it comes time. We're not at that point. Good. I know Bill wants to lead off and.
So, um. So I made a count of the donors. And there, according to my count quickly, there are eighteen people that donated a thousand dollars or more. There are twenty-two people that donated five hundred dollars or more. So. So if we're going to give it to individuals, my preference would be to go the five hundred dollar route. That's a substantial amount, uh, and there's only the difference of four people. So that's one thing. Um. I would prefer, and, uh, I said this before. Of those donors. Some of them were big donors that gave three thousand and five thousand dollar amount from their tax deferred accounts. Uh, IRA accounts or deferred savings accounts. And by doing that. They, uh, were not taxed on the money and they're going to have some serious problems getting it back. So I'm not all in favor. There might be ways around that, but I don't think they, there's probably three, four, five of those. I don't think they want to see their money back because it's going to cause them problems. My preference would be to give it to the foundation. And why do I say the foundation and not, uh, the property owners who also gave us significant money too? Um, the Property Owners Association are, consists of just people on the lake, lakefront property, to the exclusion of. The good people that aren't lakefronters. So my preference and and the property owners getting involved in more than just lake studies. For instance, they, they challenge, uh, roadhouse. They challenge the sad. They challenge, uh, uh, the lake level. So it's more than, um, studies of the lake, whereas the foundation is all about making the lake better, period. So my preference in a nutshell would be to give it all to the foundation.
Oh, why don't you go next?
Tim, you got every word of that, dude.
Yeah, he's got it.
He's good. Good, he's right. I seen right like.
Fortunately, it's all getting recorded, hopefully.
Yeah, right. So if I miss it.
Oh, that's a bill I have to.
Or if you have a problem, Cheryl does a great.
That's called there in the paper.
Yeah. Okay, let's bring it back to Paul. He's. Had something to speak to.
I have some problems. With the attorney conclusions. One being that he's using the MDR grant as an example of what he says was the overall. Intent of this, and I don't agree with that at all. The writing in the MDR grant was to get the MDR grant. So there was inclusions in there. That referenced more than what the initial intent of the sewer. Proposal was. At our last meeting, I said the money should go back to the people who donated it. Your attorney is suggesting that forty-five point six eight percent would work. I do not believe that we should sit here now and make decisions. That they don't get the money back. If we're going to give it to somebody. And then have them decide what happens to their money, and this would include the tax situation. We don't know what their situation is. Maybe it's a problem, maybe it's not. Who are we to decide this? Just give them their money back. Thank you.
You want us to go in order or how do you want us to do that?
No. Raise your hand, Jim, call upon you.
Yeah, go ahead. Well, I excuse my chicken scratch. I forgot my typed copy at home, but I have a statement I'd like to read that I'm not fully on board with now since I received the. Copy of the attorney's letter. Um, I'll make it quick. As we move forward with the dissolution process, the Garish Line Utility Authority, just one of the last remaining to, uh, task will be to determine the future of the remaining funds that must be dispersed by Glua by a majority board or this. Majority vote of this board. Some have stated that the funds should be dispersed equally between the townships. I do not believe the people who donated money would agree that that money should be given to a governmental entity. I certainly would not want that for myself. Um, this would not be in line with the intended purpose of their donation. Others have stated that the fund should be dispersed to the Higgins Lake Foundation or other organizations because it is simple and clean, and I don't even know what that means. When we look at the history of how we got here, we must remember that the townships represent, represent all the people. And by taking the oaths of office, we all represent the people. Public perception for me is a key element in moving forward with this process in any project that involves the people and their tax dollars. We must recognize that although there are many people who work with the HLF and other organizations and were strong supporters of the Glua and the sewer project. There are just, there are just as many, maybe more, who were against this endeavor and were disgruntled by the whole process. If we look at just the facts, no opinions or speculation or conjecture. Higgins Lake Foundation was a key player concerning the sewer project, right or wrong, does not matter at this point. That has to be acknowledged by everyone. I am not here to make a judgment call on rec, on in regards to the HLF or any other organization. But again, we are back to public perception. There are varying opinions about this process in the Higgins Lake Foundation. That is the right of the people and should never be overlooked. Coming together for a cause cannot happen if only one side of the story is recognized. Um, I would like to propose an option for the Glua Board to consider, and this is where I am. Uh, someone on the fence now ever since the attorney's opinion. If this board by a majority for vote makes the decision to disperse the remaining funds to the Higgins Lake Foundation. The following conditions will be attached, which will be obviously need legal consultation and opinion. Number one, the fund shall be and will only be appropriated to engage an independent and qualified individual outside of the scope of the current. Um, workings, if you will, of the Higgins Lake Foundation. And that individual analyzed the records and studies of Higgins Lake compiled over the last twenty years from an outside source. I'd also like to see, and I don't know that fifty thousand dollars is not a lot of money. Any randmaining funds, and I think that should be first actually. Shall be used to engage an individual for the sole purpose of testing and, uh, and examining water quality in and around Higgins Lake. Outside of Michigan State and Dr. Luddington, outside of the scope of what has happened in the last ten years. These conditions will allow the Higgins Lake Foundation to continue their mission as such. While reassuring the public that the Glua funds will not be used to further any agenda other than the quality of water in and around. And the studies of Higgins Lake. Now, since I've written this, um, based on the attorney opinion. I'm in, um, agreement with Supervisor Bertrand. I don't like any attorney's opinion that just suits a need. And part of their opinion or his opinion was that, um, they concluded that. The Glua Board was designed to, um, deal with. Uh, water issues because of the visitors coming to Higgins Lake. Not once in the five years of I've been involved has it ever been mentioned that we needed a sewer because of the visitors coming to Higgins Lake. He also concluded without breaching confidentiality. That if this were truly just a donation situation, all funds must go back to the donors. But he believes it would be okay to give it to a foundation because it was to serve a purpose and an intended purpose. Because we're trying to emulate the overflow of visitors. Never once in all the years I've been involved has anyone ever said we're doing this for visitors. It's very clear to me. That if you work it backwards, the attorney is actually saying, if this is a situation. Based on law and statute where donations were garnered and actually, um, it was published on websites to garner and get donations from the public. For a purpose to put in, implement, revamp, anything you want to call it, a sewer project. The attorney said, if that project fails, the money must go back to the donors. And that's where I stand.
Hey, Don, would you like to?
I appreciate the comment and again, I'm going to get in the box and take them. I read the letter. From the attorney, um. And. A lot of attorneys. On the other side. You know, I, I, I don't think this, this. Letter, the board is part of, not a tool. By who? Hiring this individual. I don't think it says to me what. You can't do. I think it says what you're allowed to do, really. There's a lot of options.
Tim, I like some of your suggestions about, um, some. You put it directives, uh, if it's to go to the foundation. I would encourage, you know, I have a little knowledge of the foundation over the many years that I've lived here now and I see what they do. Unlike, unlike a lot of, unlike both townships, townships are motivated by the public and they are political arms. The, um, Higgins Lake Property Association, so membership board, members pay.
They have a right to ask certain things and to, to do the same thing with our politicians in our various townships.
And Higgins Lake Foundation, on the other hand. They really are, they're not a political party, anybody. They're really a donation arm.
By people who support, who support now on the lake and try to always make it better for generations to come. They're not perfect. They, they, they sometimes it seems like they might do something that some of us might not like, that we'd like another priority, but they're always wishing for something alike.
So, Tim, my, my suggestion would be that the money go to the, to the foundation.
But the recommendations, at best, not, not with mandates, because I think we do them a disservice. Uh, and the people that, that work on that board voluntarily to protect the lake, they're all. Who are connected to the somewhere over the lake and they, they volunteer their time and what I've seen is just very hard people who. Don't have an agenda for either supervisor or if they listen to.
I'm sure they'll listen to Paul Bertram. I'm sure they'll listen to Brian Hill and all our township officials. But they aren't going to be governed by any political aspirations of anybody.
Their motivation is just basically the lake. And while I know that, that Paul, I'm sure is supervisor, you're very interested to serve your citizens at the, and their, their will and their will is.
Has been expressed at the ballot box. So, so you've taken that position. I think it's very legitimate. Yeah. Under, I think Garrish Township had a different view and they took another position and, and now the, um, the sewer project is gone. Now, will the sewer project ever come back? I've lived enough and represented enough townships in my life. That I have a pretty good idea that this war is never going to end. Okay, there'll, there'll be something down the road somewhere else. So we have to get rid of this money and we have to end our job. It looks like to me. I would certainly encourage all the money go to the foundation, sub to any withholding money that we need to just pay out whatever bills are left. With the caveat.
That, that your. Recommendations be that you're, that you're directed to be instead recommendations stand with you would be, I might be. That would be much worse.
Brian, do you? Speak, yeah.
No, I haven't spoken yet.
Would you like to?
No, I'm sure.
Okay, please do, please do.
Um. There's. A lot of strong opinions. Not just about Glua, but about the lake, the sewers. Um. I'm trying to. Look at this from the standpoint of we need to dissolve Glua. We need to end this. We need to move forward. What that's going to be, I don't know. I don't think anybody knows. I think you're right. Sewers are going to continue to be looked at and pushed around this lake. Um. I. I look at the money. As what it was. It was a donation. It was a gift. It was given to Glua. Glua, it's Glua's money. It's not no one, it's no one else's money now. Those that donated, it's not their money. It's Glua's money. Glua gets to decide what to do with it. It's a gift, donation, you gave it, that's it. But we need to get rid of this money. And I think the most appropriate thing to do is. To disperse it back. To those that gave it to us, not to some other entity outside of that. Whether that's both HLF and the HLPOA and every single private donor. Or it's just the HLF only. I think somewhere in between there is where we're probably all going to end up. Um. I. I, I feel this board is. Kind of divided still as far as what to do with this. I, I don't, I haven't heard. Three people say the same thing. Um. I don't want to push anything off any farther, but maybe tonight is not. The night to make this decision. If we are that far apart. Um. And I'm, I'm not saying it is or isn't. I'm just. Speaking my speak, um. I don't like giving back to the private donors. That's a lot of work.
Yeah.
Um. I really don't like the. Some of the tax implications, um. That's concerns me. Um. For me, the way I've been looking at it for quite a while is just give it back to the HLF and the HLPOA. Based on the percentages that they gave in. Um. Part of that has to do with, there's actually more money to get rid of than the HLF. Gave on paper. Now. Vicki, don't get me wrong. You guys have donated a lot of money. You guys donated a lot of money.
Um, that's sold.
But. But. Based on the treasury report, we have twenty thousand dollars from the HLPOA. We have fifty thousand from the HLF. And we have about four, a little over forty-six thousand from private homeowners. Um. I. I don't know what to do, to be quite frank with you, but we need to do something. Um. I just thought we would be closer together today than I, here we are. Um.
I wish the attorney's letter would have said mouth shout instead of.
Well, I, I think that was, you know, we, I didn't ask him that. I said, what can we do? Because let me, do you mind if I respond?
No, you're fine.
My thing, I told him, here's a bunch of the things that we've talked about, you know, the individual is going to be HLPOA, um, you know. Not do anything. And, uh, so just look at that and give us, what can we do? Because I feel it's incumbent upon this board, just as representative as Paul, like, um, like, he represents those people. The attorney doesn't represent them is, you know, I don't think this attorney should represent how we feel the pulse of the community. And so there.
I'd like to add one thing if I could. I consistently hear. That's hard. That's a lot of work being the supervisor. We were elected to represent the residents. I, I have no tolerance for this is going to be hard. I would just want to say that whatever it takes to give the money back to the people who gave it to us instead of deciding what to do with their money.
Thank you.
Let's do it.
Yeah. Are you done with your?
No.
Okay, go on.
Um.
Just let, let him finish it and I'd.
I'm sorry, I thought you were.
Let me finish.
Um. I've worked with this attorney. Through the HLUA for six, seven years now. Um, he is not an attorney that's going to tell you what to do. He is an attorney that gives his opinion, his legal opinion on the subject that you're asking about. And I believe he did a really, really good job with that, with what he put in. He didn't tell us what to do. He told us his opinion, you know, here's what you can do. The, the biggest, probably the biggest thing in here is, no one can tell you what you can and can't do, because this has never, ever happened before. This has never happened. A utility authority has never, ever been shut down before. There's no process. There's no, there's nothing for it. There's no laws. There's nothing, because it doesn't ever happen. This utility authority was created way too soon. That was the problem. It should have never been created at that point, because you didn't actually have a real project yet. That's when they get created. So I think he did a very good job in saying, hey, based on what you're, the information you gave me, what I can find, here's your options. And, and really the options are, it's up to us, what we do with that.
Thank you. I'll just kind of summarize mine quickly, but I believe a lot of it goes back to is what was our purpose is to protect the lake and to further, you know, the quality of the lake and the environment and look at the, you know, the, you know, the groundwater too. And I think the attorney, he said, you know, we should, remaining funds to donor parties committed to lake improvements, as long as improvements further the goal in this way. And I think that's an important statement where he talks about that. And then, you know, he says importantly, how are the funds will further the ultimate goal, common goal of improving the environmental conditions of Higgins Lake? I think a lot of it is, is if we're going to continue, you know, our goal of, you know, looking at the lake and determining if and when there are problems, that's a good objective and, and, and give the money to somebody that has historically put the lake front, lake first. There's, you know, and I agree with Phil, HLPOA, they have, you know, done road ends. They've gotten a little more political in their activities. Higgins Lake Foundation has, you know, done the boat wash, the marine patrol, they have supported a lot of the dashboard. You know, so they're doing a lot of things and they, they historically have focused on the lake, you know, the front, you know, they have done seminars and seeding and, and plans for buffer zones. And they've looked and they have continually provided funds for different, you know, youth groups and things like that to, to bring them into the, you know, to teach them about the lake. And, and therefore I feel that, you know, we, if we want to put the money in a yeah, we can give back all the individuals, but are they going to ultimately continue this goal? I'd rather give to one entity that would take that money and continue the good work that they've been, historically, they have been good stewards. I think Paul always talks about stewards of the lake. They have been good stewards of the lake. They've always pushed for anything that's supportive of lake quality, lake studies, they've done lake studies, they've proposed lake studies. So I feel that in my opinion, you know, we're never going to agree on all of it and we're going to fight and we can fight, you know, for, you know, you know, the cows come home or whatever they always say, and we're never going to agree. And I think though the Higgins Lake Foundation, we at least can feel comfortable, they have a long, long history of, you know, providing for the lake. And I feel comfortable in having any of the uns allocated funds or the ones that we don't spend going to them, that would further all the goals that, you know, we want where need in protecting the lake. So.
If the organizations are that good, who's to say that people wouldn't give them the money right back anyway? What we're removing is the choice of the people.
Well, they gave, they provided to that. They, they provided us, you know, as for, and they knew the cause. And as somebody said earlier, they give it to us. It's now ours to do what we feel and what we feel should be consistent with our goals and things like that.
My comment to that, Paul's right to say what he's saying, but he gave money to the cause that was going to benefit the lakes at that time. And that's, that's, I gave the money is to benefit, I mean, they got a tax break. I think they're, they're giving the money to us if they didn't want to see the lake supported in that. But I think we are just I like your thoughts, Brian. It'd be nice if we could do it easily, but you know what? A lot of people gave money and it's going back. Okay, where it can, we're stuck in this fund. We're going to, we're never going to totally agree, but the best thing we can do with the fund right now is let it be used for the lake's benefit. And I, I would do all the benefit. These people who have been considered, many of them might come back and contribute more to the foundation or to whoever the benefits to the lake. I think the passing, moving this thing through and getting it, the funds that's left, the Higgins Lake Foundation, the recommendation, maybe a more general recommendation, Tim, the recommendation
that they use the funds to, in, in connection with nothing, nothing to directly promote a sewer project, but, but to use it for the ecology of the lake, in some fashion that they do. I think just with that recommendation, I think that your benefit, your concerns would be alleviated and I would hope that we could do it on that basis. So.
If let's get something on the table.
Jim, are you going to open it up to the public?
Yeah, I'd like to get a few done.
All right.
Can I ask if Nancy's going to make a comment?
Is the board done?
I'm not done.
No.
Okay. I just have a simple statement I'm going to read. I don't want there to be any confusion out there without breaching confidentiality. Although Mr. Barnwell is correct, he's not 100% correct, in my opinion. The attorney says, based on general Michigan law and statutes and everything, that appears that Glua solicited donations. Therefore, the gifts and donations could potentially fall under a different caveat, if you will. On the one hand, it may seem like the purpose of the donation was to build a sewage disposal system. And if that limited purpose failed, returning the donations may be required. Still no, yes or no? All he says about returning to the foundation is, because he believes that the intended purpose was to build a sewage disposal system to accommodate visitors, which was never discussed in my five years involvement, that he believes that returning the funds to the donor parties, in this case Higgins Lake Foundation, to make lake improvements is permitted as long as it improves, or the improvements further this goal. Once again, no, yes, no, no. So I want to make it very clear that it's not saying they can't. It's not saying that we can, but once again, I'll come back to you. I don't believe anyone has the right to tell someone else what to do with their money. I believe it should go back to the donors. If they want to, like, like for instance, let's just say, I wanted to donate to Glua, but maybe, no disrespect, obviously. Maybe I don't like HLPOA. Maybe I don't like Higgins Lake Foundation. No one has the right to take my money, even though it's not my money technically. But then they're also saying here that, okay, it's not your money, but we believe it's Higgins Lake Foundation's money. So I just don't like it.
Thank you.
I want to be clear on something so everybody understands. I believe that the purpose that Glua was created for was to build and operate a sewer system. That's it. Nothing else. The whole point of Glua's creation was to build and operate a sewer system. Now, there's no, is that to benefit the lake and other things? Yes. But the real purpose, the legal purpose of Glua is to build and operate a sewer system. That's it. Plain and simple. So it kind of leans back a little bit toward, it leans back to what Timothy was just saying about maybe it needs to go back to everyone. I don't like that, but maybe that's something we really need to consider more.
Yes, Bill.
So my educational and work background has been in tax accounting. And I can tell you for sure, if, if a 501(c)(3) is dissolved and Glua is not, did not apply to be a 501(c)(3). But if a 501(c)(3) is dissolved, the IRS regulations are quite specific that they have to give their money to another 501(c)(3). Not to donors that gave the money to them, not to owners, not to workers, not to anything, but another 501(c)(3).
Can we agree that we can get rid of the Eagle Grant? Is that one thing that we can all agree on?
We have to, so yes.
So I would like to make a motion to cancel out the Eagle Grant.
Second.
Any discussion?
Any discussion? Oh, there ain't none. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye, aye.
Does, need a roll call?
Yeah, Mike, do you want to roll call? Sure. Tom Kaiser?
Yes.
Paul Bertrand?
Yes, yes.
Jim Barnwell, Brian Cook?
Yes.
Phil Check?
Yes.
Timothy Monae?
Yes.
Governor, now we'll go back to
Adams.
Well, that was something we should all agree on.
Not a bad approach, is it?
We're getting our yeses.
Is there anything else in there that looks like, you know, we could, again, I don't know if you want to do public comment before?
I, I'd like to get a little comment. This is a pretty large and, you know, so I'd like to just interject that we would let the public comment on this. I think it's prudent for the sake of, what do you always say? Your term? Transparency. And, and, and
He had a public influence.
Yeah, yeah, and public influence. So if there's anybody from the public that would like to speak briefly, we do limit to three minutes and we'd like you to just come up and identify yourself.
Go.
I, I guess.
Vicky Springstead, Lion Township, Higgins Lake Foundation. The Higgins Lake Foundation is 36 years old. We're a 501(c)(3), totally environmental. We are not political. We do not have a PAC. We exist for the sole purpose of funding projects for the benefit of Higgins Lake. The money we have spent toward the dam far exceeds the $50 mentioned. We invested eight, we donated eighty, approved a grant from both townships for $84,000, which went half to each township. We donated, we spent $30,000 on an environmental lobbyist in Lansing. We spent the 50,000, which was a grant to the GULA. We also had accepted donations through the Higgins Lake Foundation for the sewer project, many of which went to GULA. Some, I can, I could name some names. I don't think it's appropriate, $5 to $10,000 that we received, that we were a pass through and donated onto GULA, which would not be included in what you're talking about. This would be from the individual bundle you're talking about. Some of our projects, we have funded, let me see, where am I here? We have, we have not necessarily funded any of these projects. The Muskegon River Watershed was in charge of $100,000 by MSU and U of M. That was not organized or started by the Higgins Lake Foundation. The foundation donated $10,000 toward it, so we could be involved in knowing the results and the monitoring of it. Central Michigan U has done studies, Grand Valley State U, Schultz and Fairchild, Ayers, Lewis and Norris, USGS, the Fisheries, LimnoTech, Huron Pines. Tip of the Mitt continues to work on a three-year study that we haven't had an answer for, answer for yet. Doing something similar to what Tim is talking about, analyzing all past research and studies on Higgins Lake. So we have not heard that answer yet. Fisheries as well. Higgins Lake has funded, oh, also, the current HOHL group is also analyzing all past studies that were done. And we have not funded every study that's been done and there are many, many over the years. Higgins Lake Foundation is the only, only group for many, many years that has put money directly into Higgins Lake for, for projects. There's an article I came across the other day, cleaning my desk, which was the last time townships donated money for a study. And it was something like 1996. It was $17,000 between three groups. And since then, the only money going from any township toward the lake is the HOHL, which has, has allotted some money for their huge project that they're doing today. We funded two boat wash stations. That's one 60,000, one 70,000. We do fertilizer reduction. We fund the diver assisted suction harvester, which was out today, pulling aquatic invasive species that ensures that recreational pleasure can still happen on Higgins Lake, which helps our whole economy. We fund, thank you, Jim, for mentioning some of these. I appreciate it. The Marine, Marine Patrol, Adult and Student Education, Shoreline Buffer Grants. Boat wash attendance, we've had out on the weekend mornings at South State Park, reminding people to wash their boats, which is a continue, continuing effort. So we're talking about simple and clean over our totals that we spent. And I'm glad Michelle is here, because she did the books here at Garrish for what we donated. But what we've spent, I'm approximating in the things I mentioned, $194,000 totally toward the sewer effort, sewer effort. We entered that with full faith in both, the both townships at the time that were 100% for it. And we hope to have the same full faith in both townships going forward when they ask for our support.
Thank you.
Thank you. Do I have any seconds left?
No, no. Sorry.
Can we, can I ask before Vicky leaves?
Yes, you may ask.
She'll answer for us. But first, how many, how many people, I, I understood that we're not a tremendous number of people that would have to be
Personal donations?
Yes.
Fifty some.
Yeah, I think it was around 50-ish. If, if, if we had a, if we had a motion approved, even if not unanimously, but approved by a majority of the board, that, that awarded the money to the foundation with the understanding that it would not be directly used on the sewer, on any sewer advancement, but, but just for the health of the lake. With number one, would that be acceptable to you?
I think that would be very acceptable, because it looks like it will be a number of years. How long did it take us? Of years and years and years of talking about a sewer. Before we see any type of sewer proposal again, it's going to be a long time. In the meantime, we're fighting aquatic invasive species. We're fighting the urgent need for more enforcement for boat washing, of stopping fertilizer, putting in green builds. People are taking out trees, but planting green grass right to the shore. One by one, we've got to educate these people. We've got to have programs for awareness and education. And, and I feel that the Higgins Lake Foundation is doing a lot less talk and a lot more action than any group has in this area and certainly spent a lot more money. People support us. We, we, we never have any complaints about how we're spending money.
Let me ask this. If we required as a condition of, of an approval of this use of the money and have it go to your foundation, would you be comfortable with some 50 people if, if we gave you a list that you, that the foundation would send a mailing out, that this money has been awarded to us for use of the following purposes? For the health of Higgins Lake, because the sewer project has been, has failed and the GULA has no further need to be alive and so they're disbanding. And they've agreed to give it to us for the health of the lake. If any of you have it, if any one of you wants your money back, we will give it back to you. Would that be something you'd be agreeable to?
Well, we could go back through, it'd be a little tough to go back through all the checks and, you know, who gave what. You mean for sewer support? Is that what you mean?
For our donations, I think.
The personal donations that came here.
And we have a list of those people.
Well, you know, there's one thing you could do and that's call every person and say, do you want to donate this for continuing lake causes other than the sewer? Because the sewer is, to use some people's words, dead or they've killed it. And, or do you want to give it to the foundation for the lake projects that they do? That would be very time consuming. And I think it would be hard to
I think that's why, what if maybe Tom is saying, if you could do that, we'll give you the money and then if they, you'll send out a letter.
You mean, we could send out, ask me if they wanted their money back?
I think it's our job to do that.
Let me ask you, if anybody wanted their money back and they can establish you, they donated it, you, you wouldn't be opposed to letting somebody have their money back, would you?
No.
Have that 50?
We can track, we have a check and we have records. We can track, they, we have a check, um, and we have records reported if they wanted their money back.
I'm talking about just this money.
Just this money?
I know who gave. I know who gave.
You could, and you know who came for us.
Yeah, okay.
For as many individuals because it had their name on it.
Right, right.
So.
Are we able, Phil, to, to give to the foundation if we did approve this money to go to the foundation with the caveat that we send them a list of all the donors, these individual donors that are comprised of this fifty-three thousand or whatever it is? And that, uh, that we have that, uh, available to the foundation that one of those people should ever call and say, we'd like our money back. They, they'd have the source. The foundation would have it, right?
The only reason to put a condition on it is because we're going to pull the money back. We're no longer going to exist, so any condition is useless. Putting a condition on it means you would take.
No, I think, I think, I think what Tom is suggesting, if I may, if I may, is we give it to them. They've agreed to give it back. We will, we could send out the letter and say, hey, we have been dissolved. We've been a Higgins Lake Foundation for the purposes of, you know, whatever. If you would like to, uh, we request that money back, please contact Vicky.
Which only that came via the Higgins Lake Foundation.
From us, from us.
Chairman, we have drifted into a discussion about something.
It would be the people that directly donated to GUA.
I, I appreciate all of this.
I think if they should.
We're not there yet.
But then, but then we have to be alive for another six months.
That's why I'm saying putting a condition on it is. Okay. I have a really, really simple, easy, quick question for you, Vicky. The fifty thousand dollars that's listed here, was that a donation or was that a grant?
It was a grant. You filled out a grant. We gave you a reimbursed.
It was a reimbursed.
A reimbursed full grant.
We spent the money.
Thousand. They spent it, sent us the bill, and we reimbursed it all.
Okay, so in your eyes, it's a grant?
It was a grant. The other individual.
In our eyes, it's a donation, but okay.
No.
It's a grant.
It's a grant.
Yeah.
Yep.
Same with HLPA.
Yeah, I just wanted to clarify that.
Thank you, Vicky. Anyone else?
If there were, just to add on Tim's suggestion, if there were recommendations for, uh, people to come in and do an independent study of Higgins Lake, it would take them a long time to start from scratch unless they're somewhat familiar with Higgins Lake. You know, we have Dr. Lutton of Grand Valley State U. We don't tell them what we want here. We don't say, doc, here's what you want us, want to tell us. He's a true scientist. He's not a chemical salesman. He's out there doing research continually on the lake, telling us, um, where Billwell is, identifying the new aquatic invasives as they show up, unfortunately. And so we're lucky to have a true scientist. We don't tell them what, what results we want, so.
I have a quick comment before we move on, if I may, Chairman. Um, prior discussion a little bit has, with all the money, um, that the Higgins Lake Foundation, other organizations have spent, and I brought this up before many times in the past. We now have Tip of the Mitt, we have Higgins Lake Land Conservancy, we have HLPOA, we have Higgins Lake Foundation, we have over forty people, um, on the Health of Higgins Lake Initiative. There are so many hands in the pot. I would like the Higgins Lake Foundation Group and others to look at Walloon Lake, and I only know because their water conservation manager specialist was a client of mine for years. Yes, they do have partial sewers on that lake, but in total, they have five people on staff on that huge lake. And he's the director, and they monitor that lake year round. They don't have fifty-five people monitoring. He knows, I've spoken about this, they go around, they can see if grass is too green, they can test for nitrates right there. They, they test shallow waters, they test deep waters, but they only report to the water conservation manager. Mr. Austin and I had a conversation once about this. With all due respect, they are a dime a dozen. How come it's never happened here? We have over, we have a hundred people. It seems like too many cooks in the kitchen. How come we don't have one person literally that does the field study that reports back? Not funded by special interest, not funded by her, but just taking care of the lake. So I would like everyone to look up what they're doing at Walloon Lake, and how come we can't do it here?
Okay, Tim, let's, um.
Funded by the.
Okay, wait, I want to just get back on discussion of the, of the, just, Vicky, Vicky, Vicky. Vicky. I want to get back. We're talking about the dispers- dispersment. We're not talking about future, you know,
I'm sure there's.
Activities that should go on. Um, let's get back to dispersment. Uh, we.
Well, we're still in public comments.
I want to comment one other thing, though. I want, I'm going to, you know, I love the lake like all you people do. But I'm going to tell you something. There is no one, I defy any of us to do the work that this woman has done for the benefit of this lake. Or I don't know how many years, but I know since three thousand.
And I, I have one other comment about that. When I was first here on this lake, the very first time that I bought a place and, um, darn my wife convinced me because she had such a long history of loving this lake and her parents were here, I wound up getting roped into walking in a, because of this woman who cared nothing about the lake, walking in a Roscommon July Fourth Parade with a bunch of eight-years-old, nine-year-old, ten-year-old kids. I felt like I should have been wearing a trench coat. I looked like a dirty old man with all these little kids around, but I did it. And I'll tell you, it was the best thing I ever did. I didn't know Vicky Springstead's one iota before that day. I will tell you something. I've learned a lot about her sense, and I've learned that she has one dedication. And that's for the health of the lake.
Let's bring it back to the dispersment, and, uh, if we could briefly, please.
It's ridiculous. I'm going to sue Gelder Blum from, um, Garrish Township. Um, if you guys want to talk about fairness, transparency, and Paul wants to give all the money back, then shouldn't it be a percentage? A percentage of what's left over for all the people that gave it. You know what that would do?
That is.
That would do. That would mean you're going to get a dollar fifty, and you're going to get twenty bucks. And the foundation's going to get fifty thousand. It's ridiculous. It's just ridiculous. All the money should just be been in one check, and it should go to somebody that has history with keeping the lake good.
Thank you.
John Bartley, Lion Township. Um, the HLF is an environmental group. That is what they do. They work in our area for our watershed, for our lake, for our community. Um, the money was given with one stipulation that was used for the sewer. That was the intention. That's the environment. Um, and I would hate to see this board, I, I think that money does need to go back to the foundation. Um, not back, but to be given to the foundation, um, for the, many of the reasons that were described here. But primarily because the, the, the kinds of things that we are doing is, is not just sewer-related. Um, to put stipulations on that, you, you've seen all of the things that the foundation is doing. I, I think recommendations are not a, a bad idea. Um, I think that to, to try and funnel those funds when we have such a broad element, that it would be wise to just give it without stipulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Sean.
Nancy Lamb, um, Garrish Township and Higgins Lake Foundation. Vicky stated that HLF has donated or granted the sum of about a hundred and ninety-four thousand dollars. That money was given, well, this money was given, right, to support the township with its mission to, um, move forward with the sewer. The people who gave to the sewer project, equalling this fifty-four thousand or so that needs to go back, that money was given, as you pointed out, Brian, it is no longer their money, was given to GUA to protect the health of the lake. The sole mission of the Higgins Lake Foundation is to protect the lake. It's not to do something about the dam. It's not to look at the water level or these missions of other community organizations. We solely exist to protect the lake. And so it makes sense that that aligns with the intent of the donors that equals this fifty-four thousand to be returned. So it makes sense to give that back to the Higgins Lake Foundation. Thank you.
Thank you.
Let me clarify. Um, I believe those personal donations directly to GUA was for the purpose that GUA was created for, which was to build and operate a sewer system.
Hmm.
That's. Just wanted to.
Thank you. Yeah, I think we've discussed this topic. I don't know if we're ready for a motion. I guess.
I'll make a motion.
I'm just going to say that, you know, I think, yes, we were created for construction of the sewer, but a lot of it during the past two or three years has been related to why do we need a sewer? What is the, you know, what are we trying to protect? A lot of the things GUA got involved in was a, or, you know, a review of all these old documents is the sewer, is it impacting the water? Groundwater and all of those things. So it's an environmental, it became an environmental. And a lot of people supported us because we were, uh, promoting the environment and providing, um, protecting, um, the lake, so.
I'd like to make a motion. Motion being that we distribute all remaining funds uh, to the Higgins Lake Foundation with two caveats. One that they, um, that with our recommendation, because I understand that it can't be a legally binding thing. Recommendation that the money can be used for health of Higgins Lake studies. And the second recommendation, the second caveat is that if, uh.
That was close.
Yeah. If GUA.
I almost owned the place.
If GUA finds any of the donors that request their money back, that, um, that, uh, the foundation agree to, uh, give it back upon our notification to them.
Wait, is there any way you're going to repeat the first part of that?
That we give it to the Higgins Lake Foundation.
And then?
With the caveat, two caveats, that, uh, uh, includes our recommendation to the foundation that the funds be turned over, that the funds being turned over used for health of Higgins Lake studies. And the second one is that, uh, the, the amount we give them is subject to refunds being requested by the donors.
Okay, do we have any second for that? No, you may not.
Nope.
No, please. We can wait till we get into the discussion, if you don't mind. We haven't, we don't even have a motion. We have a.
Motion.
Motion. We, do we have a second?
I know, second, the motion is distracted.
Okay, and we have now a second.
I think that, I, I, let me ask one thing. If you would, would you consider my second, rather than withdraw, rather than I make an amendment, a motion to amend it, I just wonder if you'd consider that the, that, that, that the board furnish the list of the donors, uh, the, uh, the individual donors and the amount that they donated? And there'd be the recommendation that the, that the Higgins Lake Foundation return the money if they're satisfied that they've received it. In other words, you leave that to their discretion.
Can you say that again? I just follow.
We have, one, our affirmative obligation is part of this, that we furnish donors and the amount they donated. If we have that, assuming that we have that.
Yes.
Okay, and if, but an individual donor requests that they don't want it to be at the foundation, they'd like their money back, and they do so within, are we sending out, are you thinking as a part of the thing, we'd send a, a notice to the?
So let me, let me add to my motion.
Yeah.
Uh, I'd also, the third caveat is instead of, um, in place of sending out letters as the attorney suggested to the donor, asking for their permission or opinion or whatever you want to call it, that we publish a notice in the, uh, Hope Lake Resorter.
I would, I would urge that you just send a letter to, rather than.
There's fifty letters.
You just invite, you invite people who have no interest other than just want to be naysayers about things, uh, to join. And, uh, and I think that's a mistake. I, I urge it that before you get, so if you're going to make the motion. The other thing that I think, we shouldn't limit them to just ecological studies. We should eliminate that. We should say they use it for the purposes of the foundation, but not on a sewer advancement.
Oh, for sure, yeah. Good point.
And I, I guess I'd like to just ask if we use the Health of Higgins Lake Studies not to be
Confused.
Confused with the Health of Higgins Lake.
Initiative.
Initiative.
Yeah.
So.
It's for environmental.
What you've got as a motion.
It, it, for, for environmental, you know, for environmental studies on.
All I have is, what you just said, is that your first one was the recommendation, first recommendation was to, um, this board will recommend further research, uh, for the health of Higgins Lake. Number two, any donors who request a refund will be granted by HLF. Tom spoke up and Mr. Kaiser, sorry, and after he seconded, uh, furnish a list and amount requested by the donor for the refund at the discretion. And then he did not agree with you about, um, publishing it, that fifty letters should just go out, and that's kind of where.
Yeah. Well, and then we eliminated it. My, my revision was not the health of Higgins Lake study, but make it environmental studies.
Okay.
Now, so what doesn't get confused with, uh, the initiative?
So I'd like to amend my initial motion to include Tom's suggestion to use letters to donors to ask for their opinion and to include Jim's suggestion about ecological studies.
Environmental.
Gua.
Remise it environmental, but that's okay.
The letters to the donors come from us.
Right.
And it doesn't ask your opinion, just say this is what we've decided to do with the money in the best interest of the lake since we no longer can use the best interest of the lake to develop sewers. I mean, I, I, Brian, I want to say this. I, I love your, your comments. I really do. I, I only want to say to you that, that, that nobody would have given, none of these donors that supported, would have given to the, to the GUA for the sewers if they didn't believe first that it was necessary for the health of Higgins Lake. So that's the only difference I have with you, and I, I don't want to say it's a difference. I, it might, might be a distinction, and I hope it's not a difference.
No, I think it's more a technicality.
Now, we have a motion by, as amended by Mr. Phil Check.
Can you second?
And do we have a second as all the, with the amendments? Okay, we have a motion and a second at this point, and I think everybody understands the motion.
I think it should be read, reread for clarification.
Okay, would you reread it?
Are we going to have discussion on this?
After we make a motion, we'll have discussion. Well, no, it's already been motioned and seconded.
It's been motioned and seconded. We could have.
He's going to repeat it.
I don't have it verbatim. I did not.
I know.
Okay.
I trust you.
So once again, it came down to that it was a motion by Check to distribute all remaining funds to HLF. Uh, recommendation by the board for the health of, for the research and studies for the health of Higgins Lake. To any donors who request a refund will be handed by Higgins Lake Foundation, basically. Mr. Kaiser seconded that motion, but it also include furnish a list and request amount by donor for the refund. Um, Mr. Burnwell spoke up and said, instead of, so we don't confuse Health of Higgins Lake Initiative, that it be changed to the wording of environmental studies of the lake. Um, Mr. Check agreed that he would like to include an amendment, um, in the, uh, motion to include that wording for environmental studies, and that's all I have.
Also.
It's.
Of donors.
Yeah, furnish a list and amount requested by.
So we've got it. And we've, he's second, and he seconded it as amended, so. Yeah, we've got a motion, we've got a second.
Uh, can I, discussion?
I was going to ask for discussion. And now we've entertained some discussion on that from the board.
I believe that we crossed over into potentially a disservice to the residents by creating something this complicated this late in the meeting. You know what I'm going to vote, but this is now turned into something that as unpopular as it might be, I'm not sure we should decide on something like that tonight.
Yep.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that has?
Mine responds as, you know what? I don't want to sit there for the next two years arguing about, uh, one thing or another. We got to make a decision. And, um, you know what? Um, I respect where you are, Paul, but I don't know what you're saying.
That's because it's your opinion and my opinion, right?
Yeah, that's okay. That's okay.
Okay, any further discussion?
Yes.
Yes.
So I neglected to say one thing when I talked about 501(c)(3)'s and their obligation to give to another 501(c)(3). So, um, hit a little bit of history. After we were, um.
No, is this relevant?
This isn't relevant. No, we're not a five oh one C three.
Wait, wait, wait.
We're not a four oh.
We're not a five oh one C.
I didn't say we, I just said we weren't.
Did. You're trying to make it look like that.
No, I said definitely when I, previously that we've not.
And then let's hear it and we'll.
Yeah.
Take it for what it's worth.
So, so let me say again, we are not a five oh one C three. If we were, we'd have to give to another five oh one C three. So, little bit of history. When we were organized by the townships, we applied for an employee identification. We got a response back from the Internal Revenue Service that said, that said that, um, in order to be a public organization, you have to have certain things like policing power, taxing authority, and a few other things, none of which GLUA has. Period. So they recommended in their letter giving us the player identification that we do consider applying for a five oh one C three.
Bill, what is this relevance here? Please, get to the point. I don't.
So my point is that we are like a five oh one C three and we should have applied for a five oh one C three.
Okay, that's fine. But we didn't. So it's irrelevant. So let's, um. Brian just stepped out to use the restroom. We'll take about a three minute break if you don't mind. Any objections? We're gonna take three minutes breaks. Stretch your legs, please.
It helps us move.
Neither. Neither.
Can I get your mic, Tom, please?
Yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we're back in session. Uh, we have a motion on the floor. Go to second. We've had some discussion. Is there any further discussion on the motion that's on the floor? Hearing none. It reels with money. So once again, we'll go with a little roll. Although.
Okay, on the motion presented. Chairman Barnwell.
Yes.
What? Yep.
Know you're supposed to.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Brian Cook.
No.
Paul Bertrand.
No.
Tom Kaiser.
Yes.
Phil Check.
Yes.
Timothy Monet, no, not as presented.
Motion fails.
Three, three. Okay. Is there anyone else that would like to offer up a motion on that?
I will. I'd like to make a motion that we distribute the funds uh, proportionally between the foundation and the property owners association with the same caveats as we had for the first motion.
Are you saying at the attorney's suggested rate, the forty seven percent to everybody?
Whatever works out.
Well, it'd be, it'd be five.
No. The portion to what the foundation gave versus what the property owners association.
You think what he's saying is only give it back to the HLF and HOPOA.
Yeah.
Based on what they gave.
It would be five sevenths and two sevenths.
Yes.
And not the rest of the donors.
Correct. That's what the motion is. And the same caveat. Plus all the other caveats that they had on there.
Support.
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 Okay.
New a motion and we have support. Is there any further discussion?
Yep.
Further discussion? Do we have another roll call vote?
I'm just getting everyone's name in here. Return to cook. One, two, three, four. Who am I missing? Five. No, I'm in there. Oh, chairman. Oh, my goodness. Okay. As presented on the motion, Tom Kaiser.
Yes.
Paul Bertrand.
No.
Brian Cook.
No.
Timothy Monet, no. Phil Check.
Yes.
Yes.
Jim Barnwell.
Yeah.
Yes.
Motion fails. Hey, do we have any other motions on the dissolution? Or let's continue to discuss it, I guess.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Uh, we disperse the money accordingly in percentages to all the donors as suggested by your attorney.
There will be a motion.
I'd like to second it with the cap, with a, uh, plot that we set a minimum donation to be dispersed at five hundred dollars.
Did you say there was only two or three people that were under five hundred dollars?
No, what I said was, let me, let me get it. I said there were, um, twenty-two donors. Individual. Uh, I'm not sure I included the foundation property owners, but there were twenty-two people that, uh, gave more than five hundred dollars. And there were four people, if you took out the in order to, let me start.
Well, okay, well, let me say this. I, I'll put that motion out there as it is if I get a second. If that fails, you could try again with the additions to it. I'd rather just make a motion that we give it back to the donors and the percentage that the attorney had suggested.
I'll second it. Which is, if I understand correctly. Um, it, it's even.
A percentage to all, as the attorney.
Like forty-seven point six eight or whatever.
I guess I'd like to have me calculate that based on paying a thousand dollars and things like that, if that's case.
The percentage isn't gonna change.
It may change because it's so much money we pay out. It's based.
Forty-seven percent of ten thousand is still forty-seven. Oh, I get it.
You're good now.
Yeah.
You're good now.
You understand what I'm saying.
Yes.
Okay.
So that would.
It would, okay, I can restate the motion that I would make a motion that we pay back the money to all the donors at a percentage to be determined.
But equally, right?
Yes.
I'll support that.
To be.
Seconded.
The chairman.
Motion, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Yes, I do. So I have a list of what was donated. To GLUA. I, what I don't have, just to be clear, I don't know what the foundation or the property owners or anybody else contributed to the township. So we're not talking about that, right? Just their donations to GLUA.
Yeah, we're.
Yeah.
Yes.
It's all a kindergarten, right?
Question.
It's a question. Does that answer your question?
Yes.
Okay.
A, a question. So we're talking about fifty-ish checks, I think. Correct?
Uh, probably less than that.
But around that, right? I mean, we're not talking five. We're not talking ten or twenty.
No, um, so, so let me start over. Twenty-two people gave five hundred dollars or more. Okay.
How many are total?
Eighteen people gave a thousand dollars or more.
How many gave a thousand or more?
Eighteen of those twenty-two.
Okay, for this motion, it's just a total number.
Yeah, what's the total number?
So, um, let me, let me, give me a minute and I'll tell you. So there, here's a person that gave, uh.
We just wanna know how many people. I was on the list.
I don't know. I gotta count them.
I take it's around fifty, don't you?
In either case, it shouldn't hang up the motion. I.
Well, no, here's my question is who's gonna? Who's gonna go to the bank and get fifty checks? Who's gonna mail them out? Who's gonna do all the work of that?
That's a good question.
Oh, that comes out of miscellaneous expense.
Oh, no, you donated your time. You don't get paid.
I.
More money.
So I would say it's less than fifty, probably closer to.
Somewhere.
I have allergies, sorry.
But still.
For the sake, for the sake of moving the motion along, whether it fails or passes, I'll help disperse. That's.
I was just throwing it out there.
I hear you. Legitimate question. We've all been here a long time. So the motion's on the floor and any other discussion?
Further discussion? Can you up?
Oh, okay, yes. So once again, it's a motion by Paul Bertrand to disperse all funds by a percentage to, to all the donors as suggested by the attorney to be determined.
But equally.
But equally, yes, correct?
Proportionally.
Proportion, okay.
One word.
All right. All right, as presented. Phil Check.
Yes.
Brian Cook.
Yes.
Paul Bertrand.
Yes.
Tom Kaiser.
No.
Jim Barnwell. Timothy Monet, yes.
Motion carries.
Okay, the next thing on the agenda is the dissolution. And as you know, um, we don't, we can't dissolve ourselves. It has to be done by the, um, townships. And so, yes, um, I'd like to make a quick motion just that whereas the Gerschlin Utility Authority Board is in the process of dissolution as directed by the townships of Gerschlin. And the steps are being taken to facilitate this process. Therefore, the GLOA, GLUA is appointing. And I'd like to appoint somebody to coordinate with the township to assist in the process and authorize that person to sign any necessary document to actuate the dissolution. Does anybody wanna volunteer for that?
I think you're jumping the gun.
Well, we've done our last business and there might be stuff that needs to be done.
We're not done. You might think so done, but we're not done.
Posing in on it. Okay. But we need a name.
I, I need to ask a question. You're not talking about an existing board member at either township.
I'd like to get a.
A board member.
Our, just to kinda coordinate with the township.
Okay, I.
Townships.
So if you're, if you're a township board member, you should not be volunteering for this. Am I getting that right?
Yeah. He asked for a volunteer.
No, he asked for the motion. Tom seconded the motion, so we're.
But I still need to volunteer.
Right, exactly. But the motion's on the table. Absolutely.
Like to get a volunteer.
Yep.
I have absolutely no idea what that person would do.
Well, they couldn't coordinate with the township, both townships, that, you know, in, uh, moving this process along at this point in time.
Which would be what? There's nothing to do.
Okay, then if nothing to do, we don't need.
And they won't have to work hard.
Yeah, okay, then let's, uh, I'll withdraw the motion.
I do, I think we're jumping the gun, that's all.
I just don't. What?
You know, what is, what, what's the township's gonna do? We're not complete yet. They can't do anything.
Well, they, they won't finish these monies.
Right.
Brad.
Not be done. All we gotta do is have somebody disperse the money now.
No.
I guess that's gotta be built.
Yeah, along with a letter to go along with it, right?
I'll help you if you need some help.
Oh, yeah. Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, that's all we are. We're, we're done. I mean, other, we got.
So we're not gonna pay the attorney?
Yeah, we're gonna pay the attorney. We gotta.
Well, we gotta tweak that.
We approved.
We approved a thousand dollars.
All right. The last meet.
Okay, what about the letters and all this?
We approved three hundred dollars.
We got the three hundred dollars.
Okay, then what are we gonna do when we got fifty dollars sitting in that account left? What's gonna happen with that money? Because it wasn't spent.
That's when we can't dissolve. I mean, we can't send out those letters until we get those few things spent.
Exactly. So you just confirmed what I said. We're not ready to end it yet.
No, but it, the township can, can begin that process.
What do you need that for?
Okay, we don't need.
I mean, the town.
I, I just like that.
Correct?
I don't know what they know. And, uh.
I mean.
Just wanna make.
All is Lion Township Board aware that they're, who is working to dissolve? I mean, isn't that what you guys ask us to do?
Yes, if this, I, you know me, I'm going to the attorney. If this, if what happened here satisfies a legal opinion, then we move, you know, Timothy's involved too, but then we move along in the process as far as the Lion Township Board.
And, I mean, even though there aren't any, um, uh, cases, case studies out there agree about this process, but from my understanding from research, I've never, we're still wouldn't be done. We need to release the officers. We need to disband the Articles of Incorporation. There's things like.
You can't do anything with the Articles of Incorporation. We can't do anything with the bylaws. It's the township that has to.
That's, that's what I'm saying, right? The townships, yeah. So when we're at that point, yeah, yeah, yeah. But the boards, then we, we should release the officers.
No way to do that.
Sure there is.
Well, you can resign, but there's no point. Is the township's taking their action to dissolve it? Is it? We don't need to resign. They don't need to, you just need to end it at that point. Keep everything intact until the second whole township's dissolved. Because that way, if something comes up, we have to get back together and do something, which is possible. You don't create a huge mess. As soon as they dissolve.
Well, that's not entirely true because both townships had to pass a motion to start the dissolution process. They don't have the control because if they had complete control, I guarantee Lion Township six months ago would have passed a motion or a resolution to end GLUA. So we don't have that control until we're finished here.
Correct, that's what I'm saying.
Okay.
Again, I, I think you and I are on the same.
Okay.
All it's.
Just wording, yeah. Oh, yeah, okay.
We're not ready.
Oh, app, yeah.
At this point today to do anything.
Okay. Okay.
You agree with that?
Yeah.
Let me ask one question, just. I'm assuming it's okay if Phil and I work together to try and disperse the money. Is that an issue?
Well, we kinda need to know.
Well, that'd make.
There's that final dollar figure. That's the.
No, but I mean, the, the purpose of starting the dissolution, but us doing things together, there's not a conflict in there, is there?
No.
Okay, I just wanted, if you're okay with it, I'm fine.
I, I guess I just, I don't understand.
Just.
On the motion.
Just make sure that we're not getting in a problem here, working together.
Well, no.
So what I would suggest is that, uh, we take a week or two to get the attorneys filled. We pay it. We can estimate how many letters we gotta send out, figure out what postage is. We'll know everything.
Yep.
Then we'll send out, then we'll calculate the distribution to the individuals and we'll maybe.
I totally agree with you and I'll second that motion.
Okay, I'll, we'll make a motion.
Hey.
Phil made a motion that, uh.
No, I didn't think so, but you want to?
I'll, I'll make a motion. I'll make a motion that Mr. Phil Check, our treasurer, uh, with the assistance of Paul Bertrand, uh, they, um, draft a letter to be sent along with the, uh, reimbursements or whatever you wanna reference some as. As soon as they finish up and then we authorize Phil to make the final payments. So, you know, one being the attorney. And, um, and the you know.
Expenses of.
Expenses of postage. And once that's figured out, and what all the final expenses are, they can calculate. We authorize them to calculate the proration and start sending out the checks. I don't know, they charge us for checks.
Other expenses that would come up under our three thousand dollar limit.
Three, three hundred dollar limit.
Yeah.
So I would also propose that the letter to donors be distributed to you guys. And also a, uh, calculation of the individual amounts being distributed to you guys too, before they go out.
Kind of like a spreadsheet.
Yeah. Yeah, I made a motion that authorize Phil, simplify this additional stuff. Yeah. Not part of that moment.
Right, I'll just.
Bill, we'll ask them to do that, but Phil and all the work on these final steps, paying all the bills. Get in, you know, the proration figured out and begin the checks and not to send them out until after Get in, you know, the proration figured out and begin the checks and not to send them out until after. Do we want another meeting prior to him sending? And authorize them to send it out. And leave it at that.
As unpopular as it is, it sounds like another meeting would be, because otherwise we'll get an open meeting act conflict if we disperse the letter. And there's conversation about what the letter says.
Not only that, I. I haven't.
Okay, then.
I have no distrust in either one of you.
Let's set a date for the next meeting, but then.
I think the board should approve the final, not.
Letter, okay.
Yeah.
They're gonna prepare.
Okay, this is what I have. If this works, yeah, this is, you know, not showing, you can obviously, uh, a motion put on the table by Chairman Barnwell that Phil Check and Paul Bertrand will de- draft a letter to send and go along with the refund check to donors after all expenses are paid in full and refunds are prorated as such.
And they'll provide us with the.
And, okay.
The, um. Proration table or whatever.
That information to the townships or.
Oh, to us, to this board.
And.
And do you think that'll be? Saturday for a meeting?
Yeah, we set it for two weeks from today.
Two weeks from today.
I would.
That might be a little quick.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, don't we have to finish the motion?
We're gonna get it.
Yeah.
A bill from the attorney.
Okay, let's just do that motion.
Yeah, let's just finish this motion.
Let's do that motion and then we'll set a meeting day.
Yep.
Okay, uh.
We're in this proration. We not? You know exactly what each of these.
Yes.
Donors have said, so what you're really saying is we're gonna give back your, the others are basically say that the purpose of Glua has failed.
Right.
In Bow. Uh, we know that you contribute X. Um, to the rules of that purpose. And then it's gonna be funded.
Yeah.
Not their entire, your prorated share of that money is being refunded.
Yes.
So if you give five hundred dollars. Say. But we only, you know, we, we collect and earn fifty thousand. We only have fifty. You're only gonna get thirty-three cents on the dollar.
Yeah, there's a number in there, but.
Yeah.
Right. I'm just saying, you, you're, we're not gonna. Ru, ru. Make everybody whole. We're gonna take what we have and divvy it up.
Oh, this time you want to. You inviting, are you inviting? People say, oh, wait, can I get my money back?
They're not getting.
Somebody got a lot of money, they wanna file a lawsuit. I mean, I, you know.
Yeah.
Get out here to fight, file a lawsuit, but I understand lawsuits.
Well, that would mean that somebody donated that's not on that list.
Or they think they're entitled a hundred percent back. And they think this board is acting inappropriately to do what they're doing. I mean, I'm just. You might be making more of a, well, cloud for yourselves tonight.
I would disagree because it's a gift that they're getting it back in the first place. It's up to this board to decide to do with the money, not the donors to tell us what to do with that money for the intended purpose.
Yeah.
You think it's going to the Higgin's Lake Foundation because it's a system of policy that I would pretty say, you know, from including the say. Well, no, I should go back to the individual donors, but we're not giving it back to the individual donors. We're giving part, part back to the, to the donors. So we made our, our decision. And all I'm saying is. When you give some, some portion back to fifty peoples, you might be giving something back to somebody who, whoa, wait.
Well, we must not forget, this is based on the attorney's advice. We didn't pay him for nothing. It was just a suggestion. It wasn't telling us what to do, but it was a suggestion.
We made the decision.
But we made the decision.
We already made the decision as.
No, I, I'm not gonna just, hey, I love law. I'm a law, I'm a, yeah, I agree. I'm like, but.
Okay. Yeah, the attorney's opinion is irrelevant because we made the decision.
That's right.
We as a board made the decision of what to give. So unless we undo that, we're.
So where are we on the motion on the floor?
I don't think there is.
Yeah, there is.
Yeah, there's a motion now.
Yeah.
But I mean, it was a matter of any more discussion, I think we're.
I don't even know what it is.
Yes, Tom Kaiser.
Which, which motion?
The motion by Jim Barnwell, Chairman Barnwell, that Phil Check and Paul Bertrand will draft a letter that will be sent along with the refund checked. To donors after expenses are paid in full and refunds are prorated as such, and they will provide that information back to the Glua board.
For final.
Approval.
Approval.
Okay, for final consideration?
Final consideration.
Okay.
Okay, so.
Now, do you wanna?
That's a.
Do you want to second that?
I was.
No, I thought that's what. He stated, he motioned that.
Somebody else, cause I'm really opposed to this, okay? I'm, I'm, I'm still, I'm still, if they're gonna do it, but I think we're inviting a problem, so I'll withdraw my second to the motion.
Okay.
Somebody else can second if they want to. I'll second. Can't, you created it.
No, Jim Barnwell created the motion.
Around a little bit.
Yes.
If you come back to the board part.
Yep.
When we decide to come back to the board. Final.
Motion. And we agree that, um, Mr. Bertrand is the second on this motion? Okay.
Me, discussion?
Yeah, we will have discussion now.
So a thought just occurred to me. I believe. Gears Township actually volunteered to distribute funds. That we have.
No, I don't believe that.
So maybe we don't have.
Show. That was never official. They just thought, they said that there is a mechanism where they can put it into a trust. And then divvy, we're gonna push it out, but.
Okay.
I don't think that's.
You know, that's inviting issues because we're. Yeah, Gharish is not Glua. Glua is Glua in control and not Township.
Okay. Trying to get out of work.
No, no. I know what you mean.
As presented.
Mm-hmm.
Brian Cook.
Yes.
Phil Check.
Yes.
Paul Bertrand.
Yes.
Timothy Monet, yes. Tom Kaiser. Jim Barnwell.
We know.
Okay.
Motion passed. Um, the next item was, uh, I think. Setting a time for the.
Future meetings.
Future meeting.
I think you're gonna. Understood correctly, we don't want to do it in two weeks. We want to kind of give a little bit of time and then, um. Something will be set out and we'll, we'll schedule one, is that correct?
I, yeah, I consistently find myself in a position where I think we have time and other people are in a hurry, but.
Yeah.
I, three weeks at least to, to do it well.
You can look at it around.
I'd like to make a motion that we do not schedule another meeting date until we hear from Chairman Barnwell. There's something to discuss.
Which will be what you guys do.
Yeah. Well, it's dependent again upon our getting bills.
Sorry, Jim.
Well, I'm putting the letter together, so.
You just have to notify us, that's it. That they have something to, to present.
We would just. Okay, you just made a motion, right?
Yes, sir.
I'll second that.
Discussion.
No.
Discussion.
I'm okay with that. If, you know, when we get done, we can let you know and you can notify everybody instead of meeting. I don't think it'd take more than three weeks. I don't see that.
Yeah, when we get bills.
Yeah, I mean, that, you know, yeah, unless there's a hangup like that.
Yeah.
It's called.
Any other discussion?
Um.
You gonna vote?
Yeah.
You gonna call for a vote?
Any, just for discussion. Well, we did vote.
No, we didn't. No.
On the meeting day?
Yeah.
This is your call. The motion is that.
Isn't what the motion says is it's your call.
True. As chairman, when he had, when he feels we're ready to have another meeting, he will inform us and we'll go from there.
Call a question.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed?
Motion carries. Okay, we're up to public comments. If we have any more public comments, please.
I have a really simple couple comment. I would recommend that in this letter that you send, you perhaps give an option that if they don't want their dollar fifty back, that they have the option to. Give it to the foundation or you might list multiple places that they could give it to and they could just check it out and that might turn your fifty checks into two.
So basically an opt-out option.
Wait.
Yep.